Welcome, everybody. We'll call the meeting to order at 7:05. So Stuart Lander could not be here tonight. So Brad Shear.
Here.
And Kate is on her way. She will be here momentarily. Paula Whitford. Michelle Brusseau.
Yeah.
James Restivo.
Here.
And myself, Carol Vetter, here. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. First up is comments from the community. When you approach the podium, please state your name and we limit you to three minutes if you can. Thank you.
Kate Brewster.
Good evening. My name is Kate Brewster and I am the Director of the Johnny Cake Center for Hope, which is located in Peacedale. I want to thank the School Committee for commissioning the Equity Audit and for sharing it with the public. There is certainly a lot of important information to unpack. As you all know, for the past eighteen months, the Johnny Cake Center has partnered with the University of Rhode Island's College of Education and the school district through two Learn 365 RI grants. This school year, we have managed nine out-of-school time programs with teachers and principals, community volunteers, and URI students, all of whom are forging deeper connections with more than 250 students. Most of those students are members of the subgroups identified in this report. The Johnny Cake Center is also set to launch a youth center in less than two months. We undertook this initiative because for years, we have heard from the families that we serve that their children need better access to academic support, enrichment opportunities, and one-on-one interventions that can help close achievement gaps, improve attendance, and provide a safe, welcoming place to be with their peers after school. We want you to know that we stand ready to work with Superintendent Pedraza, Assistant Superintendent Seager, the School Committee, and all of the amazing teachers and administrators to develop strategies that will deepen the connections between and among district staff and the students and families who, according to this audit, often feel left out and left behind. Leaving this report on a shelf is not an option. I want to thank you again for undertaking this important first step to ensuring that all South Kingstown students can reach their full potential. Thank you.
Thank you, Kate, and thank you for all your work partnering with our school district.
Diane Kern.
I forgot about the button. Thank you. Do that again for the people at home. I'm Diane Kern, a South Kingstown resident, URI College of Education, Professor of Teacher Education, a partner in the Learn 365 Rhode Island Initiatives with the South Kingstown School District and Johnny Cake Center for Hope, and a former South Road School teacher. Ra-ra. So the South Kingstown School District, its students, its families, school staff, administrators, and community has many, many areas of distinction. As with any school district nationwide, though, it also has areas for growth. I appreciate the school committee's willingness to seek the expertise of an outside professional consulting group, West Wind Education Policy and its partner Edmetric, to use a research-based format to gather data from many sources and to then make recommendations to improve the educational success of all students here in South Kingstown Public Schools. The Equity Audit that was shared recently suggests five recommended initiatives and provides an action planning template to begin short-term and long-term cycles of improvement planning. This is an important opportunity for us to engage school staff, families, and community to provide opportunities to learn for children and youth who may be struggling, not feeling heard, or giving up hope. The URI College of Education is a willing partner and educational advocate right next door. We're ready to support the implementation of the strategic planning focused on equitable, excuse me, focused on equitable and excellence in education here in South Kingstown. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for the opportunity to partner with URI. It's a wonderful opportunity. Thank you.
Katie Garvin.
Can you just think of something to say? Tell me, okay? Hi, I'm Katie Garvin. Rosie Garvin, second grader at West Kingston. We're just, we, we're here together tonight just to advocate in these next couple of weeks while we're waiting for that, you know, final adoption of the budget and hoping that maybe there is money hiding somewhere that we, I didn't mean the word hiding. There is money somewhere that just has not been noticed yet to be used for certain things such as preserving every last mental health professional that we currently have in the district. I think it goes without saying that everyone would agree that the mental health of our children is paramount and it is absolutely what we have to focus on if we think kids are going to be available for learning and we think they're going to be available to improve test scores and take advantage of all the wonderful opportunities that we have in our district. So preserving those mental health positions feels absolutely critical from K through 12. It's wonderful that at the elementary level, our kids have access to psychologist, social worker, and school counselor. That was new in the last few years, the addition of a school counselor. If people don't know what that sort of represents, typically your tier-three services are for your social worker, your psychologist, and a school counselor is meant to be there for all of the students. It's meant to be equal access for all students. So we really want to have that K through 12 so that our kids that maybe don't elevate to that tier-three status can still get support if, say, something traumatic has gone on at home, or they've had a big transition in life, or they're just having a really hard time with a peer, or they're just struggling with something in their school life or their home life. We really want them to understand from kindergarten through 12th grade that there are people at school that they can talk to. If we don't have those resources available, we're going to miss a whole bunch of kids. So just advocating for those positions. We lost a couple of mental health professionals a couple of years ago. I'm sorry, I don't remember the exact year that that was. But I remember specifically that one of our social workers was at the podium week after week advocating to not lose those positions. I believe there was retirements that then didn't end up getting filled. So that wasn't that long ago. And now the thought that we may go down another mental health professional in the district just feels honestly catastrophic with how much kids have on their plate and how much our teachers are trying to do to absorb all of that extra need. I can only speak for West Kingston where my children are in school at the elementary level and there are classrooms with, you know, 23 kids in the class. And I understand that that's another budgetary issue obviously as well. And I know that they probably look on paper like they would be competing interests. So certainly, I'm not trying to say this thing is more important than that thing. It's, I know that you all have an impossible job in front of you and we appreciate everything that you're doing. We just figure the more advocacy there is for these positions, if and when the possibility arises to maybe be able to retain any and all mental health professionals, we just want to advocate for that because our teachers are really being asked to do something almost impossible. If you have 23 first graders in your class and maybe you have one of them that is having a hard time or is having an extra challenging life situation, now what do you do about the other 22 kids? Because the teacher is the only person that might be able to absorb that support. So just wanted to be on record as supporting that and thank you all for everything that you are doing. And thank you.
Thank you, Katie. Would anybody else like to come to the podium? Mr. Beasley?
There's a total of four pages there, so. Okay. So before I start with my three minutes, I have a question. This is for later on. There's a question about the change in your capital improvement program. I noticed on the first line on the budget amendments over on the right, under explanation, it says, "West Kingston Elementary School scope increased for front and back basketball hoops." Now, before Brian left for UFD, I had sent several emails to him about when this finally we're going to get a payment behind the school squared away because you can't even triple the basketball back there now, but so my guidance was when you do that, you're going to have to replace the hoops because otherwise, you know, a hoop has to be a full height hoop has to be 10 feet above the ground. So after you after you pave over, then you would put the new hoops in so they're the right height. But the other problem you have at that school, it's a, it's a is it K-5 or pre-K-5? K-5, okay. So West Kingston's K-5 school, so you have little kids. Little kids, they would like to play basketball too. So what they have, what you can purchase are basketball hoops that have a crank where you, and so they crank them up from like five to 10 feet. So it's a very easy crank. They're heavy duty. They're made for playgrounds like this. You should consider putting at least one or maybe, because there's four, now there's four hoops. Two, you know, four hoops behind the school. But you, I would think you want at least one that smaller kids could shoot a basketball because the basketballs for smaller kids are smaller too, or lighter. So that they would have the ability to improve and to grow with as they get as they get bigger. So anyway, that's that's that. So it's like, I'll try and find that email and send it to you. All right, so now I'm on my three minutes. Okay, so here's the first thing. I know, yeah. So here's the, here's the first thing, right? Three minutes is not enough. That's seriously, I mean, when you look at the, I mean, we're, this is not, this is not the town council where some nights, you know, the place is full and you have 40 people who want to come up and talk. Usually, it's like a handful of us. So can't you, can't you increase it to like five? I'm serious. Because that's just.
We, we don't cut you off. So we try to be, you know, thoughtful of people's time, but we do want to listen to you.
Okay. All right, so what I handed you out tonight is is absentee data. So the first sheet, if it's right, is this one here. It's like a half page, right? So that's from, that's from Ride's Data Center and what it shows is there a bunch of school districts with and what their chronic absenteeism for students rates are over, over the, over this period starting from the year before COVID. So what you, when you go over all the way to the right, what you'll see is the seven-year average of those school districts, most of which are the ones we want to be compared with. You know, you know, close by school districts are some of the ones that people consider at the top of, top of the food chain now. We have the highest seven-year average. We have and we also have the highest increase in the post-COVID era. That's, that's a far, far right column. So now let's go to the next page. The next page is last year's data. That's the full page one. It looks like this. When you go down, when you look at the, when you look at this on this one, again, this is all data from the ride. The thing that really jumped off the page to me was unexcused absences for the school district last year. 22,200. Now, that's like if you divide it by the number of students, it's like 10 unexcused absences per student. I couldn't quite figure out how that's possible, but that's what the numbers show. And specifically for the high school, they don't look good last year. Almost 10,000 unexcused absences. And then we have the truant absences to the right. So again, when you look at those other columns of the school districts, the ones basically North Kingstown, the East Prince of Sherwood, you'll see that we are above most of them. So when, so let's go to the next one. That's this one here. That's a current one. That's from the, I got that today. That's a absenteeism for the school district as of the last time they cranked it up, I guess it was yesterday's numbers. And again, you can see that we've had issues with absenteeisms and tardy students. And then the last one is this one here. And that shows chronically absent students, the ones that missed 18 or days or more. And then the bar at the bottom, you have, see where the South Kingstown is lighted up, lit up there. So that shows districts to the right are better than us, districts to the left are not. So we're about so you can see where we are to other districts. Thing is, when you dig down deeper and all this data, when you dig down deeper and look at this, what students in the district are not coming to school or tardy or truant or whatever, it always comes back to the four, four same groups. It's your free lunch, students with disabilities, English learners, economically disadvantaged. We have to do better. And I know, I know we're trying, but it's not good enough yet. Because what happens is when you want five-star, when you want four and five-star schools, it's those students, it's, it's the test scores of those students, those little subgroups. Those, that is what is keeping you from having four and five-star schools because if you have one, you can only be a four. If you've got two, two, you can only be a three. So that's it. And lastly, over the last seven years since the quote-unquote "level funding" of $55,994.773 came into effect, our our a cost per student over those years is going up by 40%, 40% cost per student and over those years by six to seven percent a year are costs per student. That's the cost, that's the cost to the taxpayers from the amount of money that the taxpayers are giving to the school district and the number of students that are here.
Thank you, Doral. Would anybody else like to speak tonight? With that, we will close public comment. Next up, we have the Consent Agenda.
I'll make a motion to approve the Consent Agenda.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
That motion passes. Okay, now I will turn it over to Mr. Pedraza. Why can't I say your name? So our superintendent.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Members of the committee, members of the public, good evening. In tonight's report, I want to give a brief update regarding our Director of Facilities search. I have a very brief enrollment update as well as personnel and then final SurveyWorks participation data for our families. Next slide, please. So we went from a early dearth of applicants in the original posting of the Facilities Director to a abundance. We currently have 15. We have some folks who have applied but then have also withdrawn due to various reasons. We have, I'm pleased by the qualifications of the applicants, so much so that we have continued, we continue to receive applications and we continue with round one applicant, or excuse me, interviews. We actually continue or will continue this week. We are exploring interim, an interim director regardless of the outcome of round one. Because even if we were to select someone, I don't know what their obligations are, their contract standing is, the amount of time that they would be able to give notice or as well as onboard, as well as all of the other things that could go, could go on. So we are looking to find a potential interim, whether that's five days a week or four days a week. It would depend. However, I do want to make abundantly clear that if regardless of the next Director of Facilities in an interim basis or on a permanent basis, obviously, closing out this school year is very important. Turning over Wakefield School is a project that has gotten started, that things have been posted by Mr. Mahoney, two GovBids. And so we need to literally close out that project and that school, and that is a priority. And I believe that with the right person, depending on when we can onboard them, whether it be an interim or a permanent director, that that is something that we can accomplish this school year. And then last but not least, in terms of major projects, we want to make sure that we are prepared for ESY this summer. And so that's kind of the hit the ground running. Um, and so that, that's kind of the, the hit the ground running. Um, so if any of our candidates are watching, um, they now have a, you know, they have a little advantage in, uh, in their interview later on. Uh, any questions regarding the Director of Facility?
Uh, Mr. Prazza, um, are you anticipating either having a new full-time director or having an interim that will carry us through the rest of the year and thus be able to help us with these three major projects?
Yeah, I, with this, it's, uh, expect the best but prepare for the worst. So.
Got it, got it.
You know, ideally, we will find our next full-time tech director. Um, however, then planning if they were to be able to start immediately, fantastic, we can get that going and there would be no need uh, for an interim unless we wanted to, or unless we had the wiggle room, um, to potentially put somebody on or bring somebody on to take on one of these projects. Um, to assist as they onboard, as they deal with some of the other pieces. If there were breakage, it would be something that I'd need to work on uh, with Mr. Kilpatrick. In the, in the middle of that, you know, between by the time some, you know, we get through, we not only have vacation, but then a round two interview, potential negotiations, even if some, if somebody were employed, giving the two-week notice, we would still want somebody to get these things started. Um, and to make sure that our principals have, besides the day-to-day operations, that if something major were to go on, the general oversight, again, even starting to make sure that, uh, all of the, all of the materials that are in Wakefield, that we can close that GovBid loop and open it up and, uh, get those materials out. Um, and then worst-case scenario, if we were unable to find, uh, a suitable long-term candidate, do we have somebody in place that would help us close out this year? And then we could repost in a few weeks that depending, you know, would there be a different pool of applicants that maybe, uh, aren't looking right now or aren't seeing other opportunities? And then we would get a different pool, uh, of candidates. So uh, trying to, again, expect for the best, but prepare for the worst.
Thank you very much.
Um, I'm glad, thank you for asking that question, Michelle, because I have the same kind of similar question, but more so, um, not that we need any action taken here, but I fully support moving forward with an interim because of those three pieces. And even if we, to your point, we bring someone on, when, when, when is it going to be? It's going to probably be May, beginning of June. That person has a transition and we have these three very large situations that we have to navigate and, and having a brand-new person with a learning curve, trying to get up to speed and also turning over Wakefield and, and, and marching through all these other pieces. So I hi- I personally am highly supportive of an interim director regardless.
Thank you.
Yeah, just like what, do whatever it takes to turn over Wakefield back to the town, because we want to get that in their, you know, in their hands, so they can plan for the future.
Absolutely. Thank you. Uh, next slide, please. So I just want to go back to our, in, in this week, I'm going back to just the, uh, the enrollment update because, uh, whether it be, I believe, the past two enrollment updates. Um, and actually, since we presented the budget where we've had some relative stability, that's the, you know, that I highlighted that piece in terms of our enrollment, that continues. And just to highlight that is that we've had the addition of, of, of one, of one student. So again, given the time of year, given this time of the school year, given, um, housing market trends that, you know, with spring and people, uh, you know, I don't expect this to, to change. We're entering, you know, the third trimester, fourth quarter. Um, so generally, plus Rhode Island state law says that any student moving in this, in a second semester does have the option to remain in their current school district. So here we would, it, it's this time of year that we would expect to see that, as well as our ability, um, to respond to large or, you know, large demographic or in migration or out migration at this time of the year. Um, you know, the, the, the consequences with such, uh, relatively speaking, um, few ti- few days left in the school year, uh, from a district point of view. That's why I'm giving a fairly basic enrollment update, because we are, uh, fortunately, uh, continuing to look stable at this time for the remain, and I hope, uh, due to unforeseen, outside of unforeseen circumstances, I don't expect that to change, uh, except barring an outlier situation. Um, on a related note, we will, uh, we are planning for our next, uh, kinder- public kindergarten enrollment push. Uh, and so we'll be seeing that in future communications, especially as we return from break. Um, so we'll try and kick, kickstart that up and get people to, uh, register a little bit earlier. Um, we may be pairing that up with as well with that, hey, do you know that you are coming to South Kingston Public Schools or that you are exiting? If so, please let us know as soon as possible for anybody in the community who's, who's watching. Um, that's essential because, you know, it allows the, the more time that we have, the, the, the greater our ability it is to provide, um, the classes that students want. We can, uh, adjust class sizes accordingly. We can plan transportation routes, uh, in advance. So when we have people who, uh, aren't having, not knowing is, is, is one thing, but if a decision has been made, we fully schedule at both buildings uh, at, in terms of the middle school and high school, you know, that who's ever put in for a schedule is going to get scheduled. And so they're holding places in classes. And so when they don't show up, in, in the case of the high school, if something is at capacity and other students want to get in there, if folks know that they're not coming, by telling us, they free up that schedule, um, and we can get students into the classes that they've, that they, that they want, and we can uh, keep that engagement up as well as plan, um, both educationally and fiscally. So, uh, next slide, please. So in the personnel report, uh, this month, uh, you can see that our, our lea- I'm pleased to report that our leaves of absences, um, that we have here on the board, uh, are either one is over or that, uh, will end, uh, that upon return from break, those leaves of absence will not, uh, will no longer be, uh, absent, or the, uh, will no longer be present. So I'd also like to take, uh, this time to acknowledge, uh, two retirements. Uh, we have two social workers who have announced their retirements, both here at the high school and at, uh, Matunic Elementary. Uh, again, we will, uh, highlight all of our retirees at a point, uh, later in the school year. But, uh, again, because there are two and it is a retirement, I want to take a moment, uh, to thank, uh, Chrissy Sorette and Julie Marola for their years of service to our, uh, students, educators and, and schools and communities. So. Uh, next slide, please. And a final, or, uh, well, maybe not a final, uh, SurveyWorks, uh, celebration, but a final, uh, celebration of family responses. So Ride had extended to the, uh, last Friday, the window to take SurveyWorks, and we took full advantage. Uh, once again, the numbers in parentheses are the numbers that were of my last report, uh, and these, uh, the other numbers are, uh, the total. Uh, I'd like to highlight that although we have, uh, and has been highlighted a few times, some decreasing enrollment, uh, we've had an increase in parent and family participation. And, you know, what I'm very happy about is that, um, every month in one of my updates, generally, there's you know, some sort of feedback mechanism that I'm asking for our families and caregivers. Um, and that hopefully we've, in doing so, and by using, it's not, hey, let's do this because let's measure how people are engaged. It's, let's engage with families, let's engage with people, and then based on that engagement, let's do something with it. And for me, that, that, that potentially, people are not only doing this because we've asked them to, but because they now know that we're listening, that we're using this data, that we're taking this into account, that this goes into school improvement teams, that people's feedback matters, um, that goes well beyond just their participation numbers. Um, it is a very encouraging sign and something that I'd like to thank our, our families and, and caregivers and community at large for, for taking the time uh, to participate. Um, all schools did hit that, although it be a small, um, a small goal, but we did, all, every school exceeded the, the twenty percent, and we have some schools that are even, uh, approaching forty percent. So, um, my thanks to, again, the community as well as the building administrators, uh, who, and Mr. Lonergan as well, uh, for putting this all forward. And next slide, that concludes my report. There are no other questions.
Any questions, Michelle? Prazza, is, other than obvious things, is there anything that we can do to, um, support the, the goal of, I don't want to call it a goal, it's not really a goal, but the idea of having families notify us sooner rather than later if they're banning their youngster into our district or pulling their youngster because, you know, you and I've had the discussion many times how, um, disorganizing it is and, and difficult for educators to deal with, you know, when you find out the third day of school that someone has gone somewhere else.
So, but I think right now it's a matter of a consistency of messaging. I think it's a matter of, you know, that, that continued outreach through a variety of platforms. Um, and, you know, making it available, not so, when that outreach of, hey, um, are you continuing to, you know, are you continuing with us? Or at the end of the school year, um, please return any textbooks or library books that the messaging also goes to. Hey, are your pla- have your plans for next year changed at all? Let the guidance department know. So I think including that into the message, because there, people are busy, people get caught up with things. Um, and in some cases, some people have not made up their mind yet. Um, but at the same time, we had also, hopefully, we're highlighting all the great things and giving them plenty of reasons to stay. So I think the ubiquitousness of the, of the, of the, the messaging, but not to the point that people tune it out, um, but that we integrate it in, uh, and that we make it, again, a district-wide and school message.
I do continue to try to encourage people to stay. Any other questions? So, well, can we have a motion to accept the superintendent report?
I'll make a motion to accept the superintendent's report.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes. Yeah, that will bring us to school committee business. Number eight, discussion action equity audit. And I will turn that back over to Mr. Prazza.
Thank you. So. Uh, tonight, we are very excited to, um, give a very high-level overview of the, of the equity audit, um, from the central office perspective in terms of, we want, what we hope to accomplish tonight is to give a brief overview or reminder for those in the public who are tuned in, um, or those of us who may have forgotten of the, of the steps this school year that have been taken in regards to getting this audit uh, off the ground and in place and what went into it. Uh, we then, um, through Mr. Seager, as well as, uh, Dr. Carson, just why, and myself, will present, you know, our initial reactions from the capacity of the superintendent's office, the Office of Teaching and Learning, and the Office of Student Services. Um, you know, there is, there is a lot of work to be done, and that is not a, uh, that is not unique to South Kingston, like, uh, however, this is a very robust, um, report. It is, uh, very thoughtful. Um, and it is ultimately not something, both the successes, what, what's highlighted in the successes didn't get there overnight. It didn't get there because of a program off the shelf. It got there and it became established through hard work, through tenacity, through collaboration, through professional development. The same is true for any of the goals or the, the weaknesses that need to be addressed. Those two are not going to be addressed through buying something from Pearson, through a, bringing in a guest speaker or, um, having a one-and-done professional development, professional development. This is going to take not only some time, but it's going to take, um, trust. It's going to cha- take, um, joint risk-taking. And it's because ultimately, what this report calls for is the re-establishment and the establishment of a foundation, not only of risk-taking, but of trust, but of constant analysis, not to blame and not to say that we're not doing good enough, but in a constant cycle of improvement. In that we work too hard to get some of the results that we're getting. So let's take some of that effort and figure out, are we doing the right things? And will that, and if not, let's change that so we can get the results that we want. So again, that constant culture, that constant being able to reflect and introspect and take it seriously, not personally, as well as then be led with the moral purpose and the moral courage to recognize that this is our children's one-time-through. And that ultimately, that this audit is, uh, should serve as the call to action that we cannot wait one more year. And that, uh, that we can and will, um, and should um, have some different outcomes, and we're going to be committed to that. So with that, um, next slide, please. Okay, um, so next slide, please. So to remind folks, uh, this, in terms of the structure of the audit, uh, we, we started having conversations very early on, and it did take us some time regarding getting the data, the data-sharing agreement, um, in terms of uh, making sure that all of our students' data that was shared, whether it be discipline data, um, or whether it be state achievement data that it did when it got transferred over, if it needed to be transferred over, was done so in a manner that was both secure as well as, uh, certain uh, fields removed so that it could not be publicly identifiable. Uh, if you go into the audit, it talks about this. The data that they take on is academic-based, but is also, they do cite SurveyWorks. And then the key, uh, component of all of this, uh, and it will be a theme, is that it is desa- and is that, once we get the data, once we get the results, do we not, or to make sure that it's disaggregated and disaggregated in a, in a meaningful way. The audit, though, does have limitations, especially once we decide disaggregate that data, because not only, um, do we have students who have demographic, uh, uh, demographic groups from the state or that we would be interested in tracking, however, um, to make sure that it, uh, is anonymous and making sure that we can draw valid conclusions. Um, given certain sample sizes, it actually leads to the next piece, and that there's lots of variability within our students, within demographic characteristics, whether it be from cer- across certain schools, from grade level to grade level. Uh, there's tremendous variability and is definitely not a one-size-fits-all. So that's where the report then goes into, and it talks about triangulation of the data, especially among those sets with low sample sizes. And ultimately, the need to use the triangulation, not only to protect the anonymity, but also to show that, um, that the need among, once the data is there, that there is dispe- that there is discrepancy amongst subgroups, um, that triangulation does allow, um, validity or also then puts the, uh, folks and the, who conducting the, from West Wind, conduct, conducting the equity audit, gives them a, a point of questioning that they can then pursue. Um, and that they do so in the interviews and focus groups. The interviews and focus groups, again, interviews were the one-on-ones, individual groups, or the one-on-two, um, for record-keeping purposes. Uh, focus groups were those, uh, that basically interviews that For record keeping purposes, focus groups were those that basically interviews that were that were done in in small groups. Interviews were done, excuse me, interviews were done in September and interviews and focus groups were held in. Excuse me, in January, that included all district administrators, all building principals, included. Some students, some family and caregivers, some teachers and some members of the community. And again, through those interviews and focus groups, they that helps aid in the triangulation in the conclusions that the equity audit. Both in terms of their conclusions of strengths, weaknesses and area of growth comes into play. And then last but not least, West Wind. Did take a look at certain policies that we had and certain curriculum. They did not go into every single one. Nor did we expect them to. They highlight in the report that ultimately they first do a scan of. And they did this at the end. And then when after that scanner picking out a few of the policies, they then did an in depth study. Or analysis of those policies or of those curriculum. So I believe as you go through the report, there will be specific policies highlighted as well as certain curriculum. The most the most frequent one that they talk about is the ELA wonders curriculum. Next slide, please. So once all of the. The audit or the process of the audit is complete, again, all of the data disaggregated, all of it triangulated, the interviews, focus groups. Bringing that all together, the scans and studies of the curriculum. They then break it down into into two audit, excuse me, two domains. The first being a rigorous and connected learning environments. And then ultimately, this is made up of of five areas. And for those who have read. At least the even just the executive summary in the first two pages, you can see that the recommendations. Are mapped or can be mapped over to whether there it's it's something in academic achievement. Is it about expectation? Is it about student voice? For for many of us. Who are diving deeply into this or have been involved in this type of analysis for a long time. We know that there's also within here, there's also that these are interwoven to together. And so that there will be some cross walking going on. And so it is not just one thing, it is not just one area. Again, and it's not just one subdomain that work needs to be done. Again, it's a constant gardening, if you will. To the culture and the expectations of the adults and students and community alike. So next slide. And then the next domain is leadership governance and systems of support. The main thing that I want to put in. Make a plug for here is that when they we talk about leadership and leadership development, that does not just mean administration, that does not just mean. You know, leadership by by title, that means leadership by initiative, that means leadership by. Team leader, that means leadership of. You know, being on school improvement teams. So ultimately, the leadership and leadership development is not just who are. Who's in organizational positions of leadership or formal leadership, it's ultimately cultivating leadership in. Every and any member of our school community. Faculty, staff, administration, students and community alike. So and again, that that interwovenness, if you will, of the systems and. Or excuse me, of these indicators and of the recommendations there, they are intertwined. And the the report goes into each one of these, both with research and data. Quite robustly. Next slide, please. So what I'm now. Going to talk about is from the central office, again, from the superintendent's office, from the office of teaching, learning. And the office of student services, our initial impressions. So rather than go in and say, oh, this piece of data was. Was fascinating. It's more the report on whole and holistically. Because again. Top down initiatives and what we think or what catches our eye is is. Is unique and will help us to have conversations moving forward, but ultimately, this is an organ and this is an organizational piece that. Does not need is not going to go from top down. If anything, in order to be successful. The the top needs to know what is going to mobilize and move. Everything that is that is below. And so again, these are our initial impressions and we bring this. Ultimately, we would just like the committee and the public to know. From our offices perspective, what what are what our lens is to the work moving forward. So next slide, please. So from from my office or not my office, so I'll be for myself. After going through this report numerous times, ultimately, the the main takeaway for for me. Is that commitment to our mission and it's about that commitment to the mission that means all students. And. That this equity audit, the community. Demanded deserves this audit. As do the educators to see how well we're meeting that mission. And it is not in a, it is not to disparage, it is not to say it's not good enough, it's a it's a way to say. How close or far are we from all students? And ultimately, I go back to that first piece of. Of the equity audit. Process, which is the disaggregation of that data, because we can take that data and say, oh. Aren't we doing well? Well, yes, at first, yes, but now let's break it down. Is everybody doing well? And that's a bigger question. And that's we need to recenter. And 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 get to all and, you know, really get into the devils in the details and are we doing well? Yes. Can we improve? Yes. Are we meeting the needs of all students? If the answer is no. Then we need not a better mission statement, not more disaggregated data, but we need to start acting on that. And so again, this audit does that and puts forward the call to action and I and I'm excited to help. To be the superintendent of a district where I'm I know all of our educators. When faced with that challenge are will rise and and do so every single day. The sticky lesson that I regarding data, because there are some pieces in there about consistent data protocols. And it's just one thing that stuck with me and I may have mentioned it actually in an early meeting or an early. Equity audit update here to the committee, but it was actually through. Ed metric. Where they said, you know, ask, you know, when we go through data and we take a look at it through with an equity lens, I I like to use these three questions. You know, are are the results expected? Are the results explainable? And then last but not least, and this is the one that 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 stuck with me is is, you know, are the results acceptable? And, you know, it's that acceptable piece that, you know. That, you know, that again, that moral purpose and the or the purpose of educate, public education. Really lies with, but you know, is it expected? And that's where we need to get into those conversations about, do we really have high expectations? For all students. And what does that mean? Do all students need to be supported? Okay, well, what does that mean? And does that mean the same thing for all students? Absolutely not. So is it explainable? So again, things can be statistically significant, things can be expected, we can go into economics and statistics. And we can go into other districts and we can go into nationwide data and say, yeah, statistically speaking, yes, this might happen. Or, yeah, it's explainable because on that test, on that testing day, the tech, you know. It went down, we got, you know, the 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 computers went down, so it's not always a bad thing. But again, ultimately, that that core question that I think that. To really tap into the core motivations that educators have in that moral purpose and that I would encourage people to look at. Is is it acceptable? Again, given all of the hard work that does go on. And then for me, that leads to that renewed commitment with sustained effort so that we're at a perfect. Point where this equity audit does become our strategic or will become our strategic plans needs assessment. And so now we can renew that commitment to all students or we can, you know. Craft something that we can all rally behind. However. Again, it's going to take time, it's going to take that constant gardening. However, the question. Systemically, if we are going to improve and if we are going to sustain that improvement, if we are going to have a culture of all students. We need to not just look at this report and say, wow, look at all of the things that we have to do. We also have to take the other side of the coin and say, wow, look at all the things that we're currently doing. How are we going to potentially make time, space? How do we need to, are we doing things? Is everything that we're doing important? Or does it rise to the importance of? Our core mission. And so, you know. Unfortunately, we haven't developed the time machine yet. And time is that finite resource. So the report calls for more professional development, for more. Collaboration, for more common planning time. Okay, well, we don't have that, we don't have a time machine, we can't create more time. So how do we organize time? What are we using our time for? And what might in if we're going to do something new? In order to give that time, what else might we need to take away? What can we stop doing? So that it's not just more and more and more and on on educators and on school systems. And ultimately, that the community that we all do this together. And then the last piece that I that I'd like to take away is that again. Or that I bring to the my lens that I try to bring to this work and that I take a look as I read through the equity audit. Is that again, there are lots of suggestions, there are lots of areas for growth. But there's also, I don't want to lose sight. Of the asset based starting points, because again, much like I said, I think. Even in my interviews, is that school can't be about, hey. We're going to test you, let's find out what you're bad at. Hey, come on in. What are you going to do? What are we doing today? Stuff you're not good at. Well, if students don't see the why in that. Or if that's what school is about. We're not going to get that buy in. Hey, educators, come on in and let's let's talk about all the things that we're not doing or that we should be doing. No, rather, it's a matter of let, how do we latch on to some of the things that we are doing well? And how do we expand our repertoire and make some of those easy connections? Or those things that don't take up that much time? Okay, yes, are we communicating frequently? Okay, or or are we communicating? Okay, can we communicate in a different way? To have the reach of our communication, to engage with our families or engage with families that normally we don't. Get to engage in. And so as we go through this, I encourage the, as people look through and as we think of, okay, well, what are we going to do or what are our next steps? There's a lot to be done and we should be building off of our, off of our strengths to make those connections and take. What I'll, you know. What I know, I'm going to mischaracterize right now as as easier wins, but they're not going to be easy. They're just going to be things that we can connect to quickly because we just need to take what we're good at and apply it in different ways to see some of that growth. So next slide, please.
Why we move off of that slide? Because I don't want to lose, I I you may get to it, I just am afraid I'm going to lose my thought.
Okay.
With number four in particular, which is what can or should we stop doing to make time, space and action possible for sustained focusing growth? Which while I is awesome to look at something in that lens, but I just want to make sure that we're cautious. And that we continue to have student voice in that.
Absolutely.
Because as adults, specifically as administrative adults, you might look at something go, well, that's. That doesn't seem necessary from my adult educator lens, but that might be the one thing that's keeping a group of students engaged. And if you take it away to implement something else, you lose them.
Right.
And and and.
That that is, that would not be my intent, my intent would be actually be to the opposite and pair that up with number five, that that would be the asset. So, you know, the asset of what are students bringing to the table? What are adults bring? What is the reason that I come to school every single day?
Exactly, yes.
And that so the assets. And that strength. Goes across all stakeholders.
Perfect. Thank you.
Yep. So the one piece that I and it's it's. Trying to connect a little bit, you know, between that strengths base, but also to. To to signify to the commit to the community as well that. Although there's a lot, and I've said it here, there's a lot of work to be done, we are in the right place to make that to make that jump. Again, the community's commitment, this committee's commitment to having this report be done. And that if I if we take a look at Michael Fulham's work. That talks about just in terms of in terms of leadership and having sustainable lasting school and education reform. The first step that we have to have is we have to have people who care about making a difference in the lives of students. Check mark done based on every single thing, every time I come, you know, visit a school, talk with our educators. Regardless of the reason that I am there, I I. I see, I get to see firsthand amazing things and committed people who are committed to those students who are in front of them. And then the next stage would be, okay, well, and I see this in our schools, I see this in our administrators. Let's, you know, we know that there's a gap there, whether it be the school improvement plans or then the faculty meetings that. This is this work is being done. So I would say that in terms of where we are as a as a school, in terms of our schools and district culture. We're at that number two, where now it's a matter of how can we work together? In terms of making sure that we all see ourselves that. The student that I have don't have yet is still going, it is my student, might not be my student today, but it's going to be my student someday. It's not, and ultimately, that there's a there's a quote that a former superintendent of ours. Used to say is that, you know, we all teach seniors just at different points in the continuum. And that ultimately is number three. How can we see that that, okay, that I, you know, at fifth grade, maybe I see things working well. But I know that these students are going to go to sixth grade next year and they're going to potentially be using a different curriculum. So what can I do in my vocabulary practices that prepares them for that? Rather than just looking at them as a fifth grader right here, right now. So ultimately, having every. Everybody in the system ready to reduce that gap for the student that. That both that they have now as well as the benefit of the student that they'll have in the future. And then the number four is, once we have that, we can take a look at the systems and structures and talk about what learning. Does and should look like. And that again, here we see that constant spawning of leadership in others is being fostered. And so again, while not part of the equity audit, I do want to, you know, do want to point out that the things that. Are in the audit as recommendations. And this is from Michael Fulham, I want to say even like two thousand seven. That those things that are being recommended now are are grounded in. You know, concrete foundational steps of leadership that I see both in terms of the natural day to day operations of the district. As well as where we need to go now that we are armed with this. With the audit and will soon have our strategic plan. So, next slide, please. I will now. If there are no, there are other questions for myself, if not, I will turn this on over to Dr. Carson and Mr. Seager.
Good evening, Madam Chair, members of the school committee and members of the public here with us this evening. And, you know. I'll just begin by saying, not only do we follow. Our superintendent, Michael Padraza, but we also follow the words of Michael Fulham, so no easy act to follow, but. Indeed, it is a pleasure to to be here to. Speak to our initial impressions regarding the equity audit. As it relates to our respective offices. And as we heard Mr. Padraza kind of walk us through in a. Particular way here is that, you know, this is really an opportunity for us to provide. particular way here is that, you know, this is really an opportunity for us to provide school committee along with the community of that, that high level snapshot related to areas for growth and our assets of which there are many that we know are captured in, in our equity audit. As Mr. Padraza has indicated in very, in, in, in a number of ways, you know, this is the initial, you know, call to action around this and really the beginning in the roots of work that will certainly be longitudinal in nature. And I know I speak for both of us when I say we are, you know, very much looking forward to getting deeper into that work as we move along in time. So before I get started in the content of the slide, I also wanted to just indicate a point. Again, echoing again that you'll hear a lot of similar themes in the slides. As we go through them and, you know, understand that as part of a learning system, there's an interconnectedness and a, you know, interwoven aspect of the topics that we touch upon. So things don't necessarily operate as, you know, in a vacuum and stand alone. So you'll, you'll see that resonate as we move through. So in the first slide, next slide, please. So in the spirit of starting off with that assets based lens and working off of a foundation of these areas of distinction captured in the report. One phrase that jumped out at me as, as one reader was that, you know, in the equity audit, they use the phrase, you know, that we should be genuinely proud of the strengths and the assets that are captured inside of the equity of equity audit. And those include our, our relative academic achievement on state assessments. Holding students to high standards as it relates to those assessments. And then, you know, also connected to that is the strong foundation that we have here in South Kingstown of relationships and connections between and amongst our staff and our students. And there's a variety of triangulated data points referenced to reach that that conclusion about those, the strength of our existing relationships and connections. And then finally, you know, that piece around the, the resounding commitment to student learning across various groups, students, families, parents, faculty, staff administration. The, the authors of the equity audit found in their data that, you know, there was that strong commitment to student learning that resonated in each of the voices from, from the communities. So, you know, in, in thinking about these assets, we do ask the question as we are charged with is, you know, when we break down these particular areas and when we disaggregate our data and we ask ourselves the question related to is it, are these strengths or are these assets that incorporate each and every child within our community, each and every member? We know, next slide, please. We, we know from the data captured in the equity audit that, you know, there are gaps and there are areas and opportunities for growth. And, you know, as it relates to the office of teaching and learning, selfishly, I would say that, you know, the teaching and learning is one of those interwoven pieces that cuts across the entire organization. But thinking about some of the, the high level pieces that, that certainly warrant discussion and you know, here this evening is, you know, starting with those areas for growth related to, you know, do we have high expectations for each and every child? And it's a very purposeful word in here in, in, in terms of the sustaining of high expectation. So it's one thing to set high expectations and it's another thing to sustain those high expectations across space and time. So in, in our current context, that might look like between day one and through day one eighty and across the entire pre-k to twelfth grade plus learning continuum, do we sustain that for all kids all the time? And then in addition to that, you know, do we, are we able to provide that, that access to meaningful rigorous learning for all? Do our current courses allow for all students to pursue passions and pursue areas where they can be challenged? Are there obstacles to that that we need to look at more closely as we move forward as an organization? And then thinking about that third bullet related to what is the nature and of our supports and what is the nature of the system of supports and interventions in order to address each and every child's needs related to academics, social emotional needs and behavioral needs. And yeah, in the spirit of continued growth across those, those layers. And so in order to affect that work, in order to affect those areas of growth, the equity audit walks through a series of recommendations that relate to the office of teaching and learning and chief among them is the opportunities provided, the professional development and professional learning. And finding ways to not only leverage the existing systems and structures that we have. And as we know, in our, in our current CBA, we have a, a single professional development day to kick off the year. The equity audit calls attention to are there other creative new opportunities for us to explore as an organization moving forward in order to create professional development and collaboration opportunities across space and time for the adults who are charged with addressing each of these areas of growth and meeting each child where they are at respectively. And so, you know, there are recommendations related to, you know, where we might focus, some of these big buckets related to where we might focus our professional development and professional learning. And as you can see here, you know, in, in the slide, cutting across our, our high quality curricula, are, you know, affecting research-based instructional practices. How we gather and disaggregate data? That's in, in many respects, in real time to position, position us to be able to respond in a speedy manner to needs that might be there. And or to celebrate where we know we are making a tremendous impact and moving the needle in the direction we want. And then finally, uh, the, the last point here is one of the themes that resonates as again, as, as one reader is around this concept of supporting universal ubiquitous connectedness and belonging for each and every child. We know that there's a tremendous positive effect and impact as it relates to relationships and connections and a sense of belonging and how that ties to student outcomes. And I will leave you with a, a quote from Linda Darlingham and and that, you know, we know students learn as much for a teacher as from a teacher. And so with that, I'll pause and answer any office of teaching and learning specific questions. Barring none, I will turn it over to my colleague, Dr. Carson.
I just, I just want to ask about the professional development you had talked about because we have this new council, this collaborative relationship with the teachers to decide what will be done in, on the professional development days. So how does that connect to this initiative?
Thank you very much for that question, Mr. Shear. And I'll say, you know, best laid plans. So I, that was something that I, I certainly, you know, wanted a, a space to, to comment on. And I appreciate you asking that question. So it just so happens, the professional development committee that we know is captured in our, in our current CBA, that committee actually met yesterday and together collaboratively, we looked at several portions of the, of the equity audit and already started, you know, thinking about what the impact will be as it relates to the equity audit and our current professional development model. And again, working within the current systems and structures, but also thinking about, you know, are, are there opportunities for us to affect the work otherwise? But, you know, I can assure you, that is a body that will engage in robust work related to what essentially is a needs assessment that is done for us that we know the crosswalk and strategic planning. And we know that professional development, the, the form and function of which will follow, you know, what, what our overall strategic goals are. Thank you for that question.
So I, I'm hearing everything you're saying. I appreciate everything you're saying. It, what's screaming out to me as I, as I look at our personnel reduction on, on this side of my head and on this side of my head, I have all the things that we should be working towards and they don't, number one, and I'm speaking to the choir. They don't, they don't jive. That said, and I also hear, I know the, the professional development and it's baked into our CBA in a limited fashion. We often run into a situation where, well, this is how we have always done things and it works for us. We'll continue to do things that way. Which I think is like the death of education. And so I really hope we can expand out of that. But I also, as I walked in, and I apologize for being late, two amazing partners were standing at that podium, expressing interest of collaborating with us. So we have these opportunities and what I would love to see with baked into that recommendation is taking into account all our constraints that we're faced. But then also looking outside the box and then looking at our partnerships and opportunities that we can embrace and find ways to make sure that that is baked into these recommendations or else we're just gonna continue to, and I'll quote my friend here, doing the same thing over and over, expecting different results. So I, like I said, I appreciate all of this, but I just hope we are truly looking for real change because otherwise it's just kind of like reading the report and you know, putting the pin in it, you know, I mean, so.
And, and I appreciate that, Ms. Massimanti. And I will say, you know, in response to, to echo an earlier point, you know, we know in looking at the data that's captured here and we asked that question, you know, is what we are currently doing working for all? And we know that there are, there are gaps and my hope and my expectation is that, you know, we, we look closely and pursue opportunities to do things a little bit differently, a little more robustly. Definitely related to professional development and and, you know, I look forward to those continuing conversations. Thank you.
I would just say that we, we've also even prior, this committee has helped do that already for next school year when we had, through the adoption of next year's academic calendar. So just by taking the first day of school, making that for transition grades. In doing so, not only do we have schools that are then creating new opportunities, but in do, and doing so as an entire school. But by doing so, they have now created more time that they can get for that collaboration and for professional development. So again, that, just something that, again, structurally and now moving forward, I won't be putting another calendar in front of you, I don't think. But, you know, we're, we're looking to seize upon those opportunities as well as now in year two of the CBA will also have, you know, we now have instructional coordinators who are established in that, you know, we know who they are going to be. And so there are resources that we can tap into next school year that we may may not have done so, so robustly this year. We're already creating those new and different opportunities.
Thank you, Mr. Padraza.
Just like Ms. Massimanti and Ms. Whitford said, that we, we can't keep doing things the same way just because that's the way we've always done it. And throughout this document, it is reference to, you know, all students. Are we really here, you know, with the all students can achieve at high levels? When, when we discussed in the contract negotiations, the professional development team, it was met from our educators with great enthusiasm, which really, as an educator, it really excited me. I think we need to also, and, and I can't wait to hear about the work that, that they do. I'm expecting great things. But we also have to have the idea that we're not just having high expectations for all our students. All our educators. And, and they need to have buy-in in the professional development that is, is going on for them. So I look forward to what this committee comes up with. Thank you.
And thank you very much, Ms. Rousseau. And I would say that the, the thought that comes to mind is that, you know, within a, a learning organization, we are all learners. Adults and students alike, and that similar to our students, our adults also need support and need to, you know, a level of responsiveness from the team around them. And I can tell you that you know, the conversations are engaging and robust, you know, between and amongst the members of the professional development committee. And you know, there's definitely a, a, a positive vibe and spirit related to the work that we are, are able to do. And I, I take no credit for the work done to date as a newer member, but I will say, you know, there's definitely, you know, there's a lot of pride in what professional learning has been done with the limited scope of opportunities. And hopefully those will broaden.
And I, I think that's a good thing for our educators to demonstrate to our students that they are continuing to learn. You know, my mom, God rest her soul, and I used to have the discussion, Lord, deliver me from the day that I can't learn something new.
Excellent. Thank you. Dr. Carson?
So one of the reasons why Mr. Seager and I are both here is that when we started reviewing this report, we real, I know I'm shorter. Went through that last time. That the work of the Office of Teaching and Learning and the Office of Student Services really is interwoven, that the recommendations in this report, although there are some things very specific to special education that I'll address briefly this evening, a lot of the work when we're talking about all students and when we're talking about high expectations and talking about student buy-in, really we're speaking about all our students. And we, and so our work is spending a lot of time together to have those conversations. How do the students with disabilities and the achievement gaps that they are presenting to us? You know, how do we make sure that they are part of those all students that you mentioned earlier? I'm sorry, can you go two slides forward? Thank you. So just like the other sections of this report, the area of distinction is really the building of relationships and the commitment to student learning that our faculty and our families and our community exhibit. I've seen that. We've done some joint professional development. Our special education folks are as engaged as our, with their general education. Folks in order to really create that piece of talking about curriculum, teaching and learning for all our students. The areas of growth that are really talked about that we need to work on are not really new themes to us here. And I've had the conversation with you before and I'll talk about it a little bit. Our graduation attendance and achievement, as was mentioned in public comment, for our students with disabilities is far below their non-disabled peers. Although they are commensurate across the state, it's still not where we want to see those students be. Their achievement is in the single digits where their peers, non-disabled peers are much higher in academic achievement. Family voice within this report talk about the experience and perceptions of special education. And at times they feel isolated, confused, barriers put up for them. And in that way, we really need to have that family and student engagement as we move forward within special education so that we all partner to make sure that every single student in our district is achieving to high standards. The achievement gap is one that we talk about. The achievement gap is one that we talk about, I think, daily. We talk about what interventions need to be in place, how we're going to have our special education folks um, support those students and what additional things we need. Another interesting part in the report is they specifically called out the identification of students for special education services. That it was not clear how we identify our students. I found that as a challenge. Um, but it's something that we really need to work on as a school community and with our community um, partners in order to make that happen well. Um, our families should have clear understanding of what's happening within that special education process, how their students are being evaluated, why they're being evaluated and what those outcomes are, whether it results in an IEP and individual education plan, a 504 plan, accommodations in the classroom, interventions, whatever it is that they clearly understand that the supports are there for their students. Can you flip to the next slide? Thank you. When I read this report, I actually had a little bit of an aha moment. In January, I was before you all talking about the state of special education in South Kingstown. I had five areas of um, priority goals. Parent satisfaction. Certainly this report, the audit speaks about satisfaction or lack thereof. And I talked about facilitated IEP process at that time to help our families feel as their equal partners and part of the team within those decisions for their students. We talked about the achievement gap, again, highlighted in the recent audit and programming and staffing that's needed to close those gaps for our students. I talked about equity. When you look at our um, disproportionality data, I talked about that at the last um, in January. That Ride looks at us to make sure that we are identifying students based on disability and not other factors that may look like a disability, but certainly are not. One of the other issues I talked about was trust and having that growth mindset, that we understand that all our students um, deserve a high quality education and that our data practice is needed to improve. And with those data improvement, when we are transparent with our data, it builds trust within the community. And lastly, family voice, the stories that were shared within the equity audit certainly rang in my mind as I read them. Family voice is important and we look to C-LAC to try to do that. We've tried to have some coffee hours with all of our buildings. Um, we're trying to make sure we have student voice. We have a college panel coming in actually this week. Uh, students with disabilities who are currently in college or graduate are coming to be able to speak to our students on what it's like to be on a college campus and the possibilities of that for everyone. So in that way, it was I felt my work was going in the right direction from what I discussed in January and with um, sharing with the Office of Teaching and Learning, I think we will have those all kids achieving to high standards. Questions?
Um, I, I love what you have here because it's exactly um, aligns with what you came in and saw. Um, and I think that's great so that we can recognize the challenges that we've had. And we've had them for a long time. When my child was in special education, we dealt with these exact same cha-challenges. So this has been really difficult for this district to find solutions for.
Mm-hmm.
And I just want to ask you, after reading this report, did you find tangible evidence-based solutions that will help you solve these challenges?
I think at this point, having just gotten the report last week and kind of had the weekend and to really look and prepare, we're at that high level piece. I do think when I look at um, tangibles, um, I think one quick tangible that I really see is that that professional development has to be everybody. We all have to be grounded in that curriculum and the high expectations and the interventions for all students. Um, right now, we kind of have our professional development. When I first started, it was more in buckets, like we had a special education piece. It was good. Um, but you know, making sure that all our teachers are engaged in that high quality um, professional development, I think is key because you have to know the curriculum before you can start being able to do that specially designed instruction piece. Um, specific pieces at this point, we have lots and lots of, of work to do and the strategic plan is going to guide some of that.
I thank you for that. I know this is very early on to ask that question, but I'm, I'm just, I, I'm so hopeful that we're going to find a way forward here. Um, and I, I agree with you. I think every teacher is a special ed teacher because if they have those students in their class and they're all teaching them. And, and I know they all are looking for those same, um, you know, grounded tools in that toolbox to help them. So.
One hundred percent. Thank you.
Other questions?
So I also want to like kind of maybe um, again, throw some caution in there because this is an audit. It's not a, like, here's your solution, right? And so what I'm, and, and I certainly haven't dug into it as deeply as you all. But I see where it will show our, again, it shows our areas where we're successful. Clearly areas where we have incredible room for improvement. Um, but I don't necessarily know that it's going to specifically spell out the tools that will help us solve the problems, but more so give us guidance around like what the problems are, recommendations on, on navigating these problems, but I think it's going to be up to the school community specific to South Kingstown to really hone in on what those um, actual tools are. And again, I, and I, and again, preaching to the choir, um, there are many resources in our community who are doing it. So we want to make sure we partner with them and, and learn from those who are already excelling at it.
Mm-hmm. Agreed.
And look at this audit as really a, a, a gap analysis of where we are, where we want to be. And I, I think to Kate's point, we really want to develop the solutions that are going to be effective for our population and our community. Uh, and we are probably going to have to engage in first base. You know, you know, take some risks in, in thinking about ways we can engage other elements of the community to, again, to Ms. Matt's and Andy's point, we have community resources, we can engage further, we have you or I at our fingertips, we have things that we can bring to the table that uh, maybe other communities don't have uh, access to. I think we could, we, you know, I, I think we can get beyond thinking of doing things the way we've always done them and start really in innovating on how we can achieve these uh, uh, gap closures, I think will will be successful. But yes, I agree. I think we need to digest the report and get those strategic plan, get that strategic plan together so we can uh, take action on it, move it forward and um, you know, get this community moving in the right direction.
So I just want to say, well, I, I agree that the audit is to, to help us see where we are, where we need to go. But they do give us specific recommendations. And I think it is important to listen to their, those recommendations that are also there in that report.
I would just like to say, you know, this equity audit did not happen easy. It took four years for this equity audit to get up and off the ground for us to be able to have a report in front of us. And we have to be very cautious of how we move forward, who we engage to help us move forward and I would like that to be done slowly. I appreciate you all coming in here with your initial reaction to the audit and, and the report. However, uh, I think that this be a task force formed to dig through it all and then make recommendations to the strategic planning committee of how we're going to move forward. Because the equity audit, in my opinion, was a way for us to change the culture and the system of how we educate our kids in South Kingstown. And the culture is the same as it was decades ago. And it, it, it is the sense of best practice that was used and still being used because it's just been generation or generation or generation. And it's no fault of anybody there. Not pointing any fingers, but I'm saying we have the best opportunity in front of us right now because we have had somebody look at our district and give us this report to say, this is this and these are all your areas where we've made some recommendations that, that your areas where gaps are that need to be built and these are a guideline of how you can get, get there. And I think that's how we should be doing this. I, I I don't want us to have an equity audit that is not, that does not move us forward. That, that does not move, not us, but not move our students forward. That's what this equity audit is for. It's for our students. We are the adults, we are the ones that have to put our heads together and come up with a solution to move our students forward. And, you know, I just, I worry that this equity audit will be for nothing and we cannot, we cannot allow that to happen. We have to work together collectively as a community, as a committee, as J code uh, administrators, educators, all in. Everybody has to be all in to find a solution of how we move our students forward and create a culture that can stay as we move forward, but making slight changes to continue as I'm not having for success for every student, whether they're an IEP student, a student with behavioral issues, a student with 504s, and just a student struggling, mental health, social, emotional, all of its weight here. And those are the things we need to be making sure that every student that suffers with any of these things can successfully move forward.
Thank you.
So I agree with what's been said by my colleagues here at the table. Um, you, we, we have some, some suggestions and recommendations, but we need to take those and make them work for South Kingstown. And um, I definitely don't want to see this as a bunch of paper on a shelf collecting dust as a continuing working document. It's not, we're not going to get instant gratification because if there was instant gratification for, for closing the achievement gaps, for making sure our students had what they needed, we would have had it in previous years. But like Ms. Whitford said, it took us four years. I thought it was more than four years, but it took us four years to get the report in front of us. And if there was a silver bullet, every district in the state would be achieving at the top levels. So this is going to take a lot of work, a lot of thoughtful, deliberate work on the part of us, our administrative um, staff and our faculty. And we're right behind everybody.
Thank you, everyone, very much. Thank you. If you could go to the next uh, two slides. So in terms of our, our, our next steps, and I think we've actually um, begun that uh, even here tonight and even prior to. So maybe responses is, is, is the wrong word, but ultimately um, getting communities react, our, our communities' reaction. Uh, and I, and to, to the larger point, those ideas of what they see as strengths, what they see as weaknesses, what they see as opportunities. Um, and that again, begins here for the school committee tonight. Um, also, you know, in, in the in the future, we will have community forums, making sure that uh, people who could not be here tonight um, and different school communities um, have an opportunity to, to, to be heard as well as uh, to listen. Um, and that we can, or excuse me, is, and that the administration can, can listen to what ultimately the, the hopes and dreams and the takeaways are um, as a result of this equity audit. Administrators did get copies of, of this, obviously. Um, but now that it is publicly released, they, they will start working with their school improvement teams. We began, uh, and we had mentioned previously in this presentation, um, that we started working yesterday. We had the professional development subcommittee. Um, a, a regularly scheduled meeting and the equity audit was ultimately the, the agenda was, okay, what are, what are going to be our takeaways? Where do we, what are people's ideas of where we start? What are the, what are the needs? What are the struc, does the structure of what um, we know about adult learning? What needs to be present? Because, you know, what, although we had a wonderful opening and great professional development, this year, we now need to focus, how do we put those guardrails up? Or how do we make sure that the, the equity au-audit or uh, recommendations from, and that opportunity for collaboration and growth, how do we embed that um, to-together as, as a committee? And then of course, as, as I've mentioned before, uh, this, the strategic plan. So again, this is going to be an ongoing um, getting the community's reaction because again, this, the schools are made up of the, of the community. Uh, and we are a community and ultimately to, to close achievement gaps, to make sure that every single student is known, respected, safe, uh, and supported as they, as they take risks to become the the human being, the amazing human beings that they already are, but also that they want to become. It takes the community, it takes everybody. Um, and I'm confident that together we'll get there. Uh, so uh, in the next slide, please. I would, I, I, I would like to thank the committee for recognizing that it took years to get here. We will do our best to make sure and we are committed to making sure that our that where we need to grow and that that growth does not take years. But again, I do thank the committee for recognizing that it does take time. And I'll return back to Michael Fulen, um, just because whether this is our students who come to school um, and are positioned to learn or are not positioned to learn, whether our um, edu-faculty and staff read this report and are filled with uncertainty, or will this administrator be here next year? Well, that uncertainty is always there and hopefully, and through this report and through the leadership, again, both through those with formal leadership positions in the school district, as well as those who are leaders because of what they do every single day, that ultimately we are now at the place, we are at what I'll call, refer back to that level three, armed with this report and our collective commitment. I think we're, we are now in a position to remove some of that uncertainty. And even if we don't remove some of the uncertainty that Michael Fulen talks about here, we know that we're in it together and that we are going to support and trust and take this journey together and we're going to come out better for it. And more importantly, our students will come out better for it. Uh, and therefore we will all benefit. So I would leave the community with our, the, the final comment in terms of this presentation, uh, under conditions of uncertainty, learning anxiety, difficulty and fear of the unknown are intrinsic to change processes, especially at the early stages. So as we read this report, wow, that's a lot. I don't, can we do all of these things? There's lots of unknown. How's the community going to react? How are my students going to react? How are my teachers going to react? One can see why risk-taking mentality and climate are so critical, like people will not venture into uncertainty unless they or others appreciate that difficulties are a natural part of any change scenario. And if people do not venture into uncertainty, no significant change will occur. I thank the committee for all of your years of hard work to make this possible and showing the uh, all of the faculty, staff, administrators a-and students that you are willing to wade into that uncertainty and uh, with us and your commitment is foundational to what will be uh, our improvement and success moving forward. So thank you. With that, I will take any uh, other questions. With that, I will take any other questions or comments or reactions from the committee.
Thank you for the everyone involved in the that summary. I think, you know, I think four years ago is when it was first discussed in a budget meeting. It was for that. I just want to recognize there were a lot of advocates in the community. Who had been pushing for this for years before that. And I don't think any, I don't know if anyone in the room, but. You know, I I think for years, we saw these achievement gaps and. They just continued and continued with the same people we're talking about in the equity audit and there never seemed to be. Action. There seemed to be a lot of uncomfortable looks when it was brought up. That the same people seem to the same, the the same cohorts seem to to struggle in our schools. But never really saw action around it, which is why we we are where we are. And I think for a lot of people, this this took longer than it should have, and maybe it did. I but but I do feel like the. The time, the timing for us has a lot of potential. With a new administration, starting a new strategic plan and feeling like we have a little bit of a fresh start in the district, but. It's an enormous project. I think we're really talking about changing the culture of our of our district for everyone, for. Administration and faculty and staff and students and all those groups are affected. And while we're, you know. Building a high school is the biggest thing this town's ever done, I think. But this may be the biggest project. Outside of a construction project that this district has ever embarked on because it touches every single person. And it's really about changing a culture. And that's probably the most difficult thing you can do in in any organization. So I'm interested, as Ms. Whitford said, I don't suggest that it may be a committee. And I don't know if that's the right way to do this or not. What I do think we need is just. Just like we have certain things we see at every meeting that are constantly top of mind. I think, just like we have updates on the building and enrollment and all these other things, I I think this just needs to continuously be top of mind. For the school committee. So and 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 part of that early on. I think very few people in our community are going to read a ninety page equity audit. So we need more of this sort of breakdown of in in simple terms of what this says. And what we're going to do about it because it's going to take a lot of focus and a lot of challenges, but it but there's. In the audit, there's tremendous potential and some of the tools are there. You said they talked about wonders a lot and some of the tools are in wonders. I think our teachers just haven't learned how to use those tools. And I certainly understand. That when you're, you have maybe as part of an optional part of the curriculum. That you can talk about other cultures and you have no understanding or familiarity personally with those other cultures or how to guide conversations around them. Because you haven't been taught anything about them. You don't have a personal history that that might be uncomfortable and you leave the optional parts out. So 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 many things are there for us to start, start, start working with and. I think as has been said, we just, we have, it's the time for action now. And I do think we have some suggestions about how to do that from them. But we also need to just be constantly paying attention and I and it and it should be at all our meetings that we're doing. Some some sort of feedback and and work around this. My, my only question is. That this item says discussion and action, and I'm wondering if. There was anticipated action or a request for some kind of action. Is it, do we need to accept this as an audit or was there hope that we would take?
No, it it was only put on in an abundance of caution. We didn't want to have something come up and not be able to act on it. So it was only put there for that reason.
Okay, thank you.
So I won't take too long because I clearly interrupted everybody as they were presenting, but I agree wholeheartedly with what Brad is saying. I still have a hard time resolving what's on this list here and our next agenda item with what we need to do. To through no fault of our own, because this is clearly not our choice. But it does speak volumes to and it's a constant argument that I have. At the town level with, yes, we're building the new, it's the opportunity is ripe at this moment in time. We're building this beautiful new facility over here. We have all these, all these pieces coming together. But if we're not funding our school system, what's the point of any of it? And if we're losing all the resources or not all the resources, some of the resources that we need in order to make these changes that we just discussed. What is the point of all of it? And and so I agree with with you, Brad, as far as we need it top of mind at ours. Because yes, we get building committee updates, but again, what's a shiny new building if we don't have quality program and support and culture inside it? Because the culture is not only to change in our school district, it is to change in our community. That's a huge piece because. One of the arguments that I love that comes from the town as far as funding the school's property. Properly is they talk about the community members who don't have kids in school and and you know, the senior citizens and. It's like, who do you think those people are, right? At one point, they were the children that we educated. And and we educate our children, we teach the culture and it comes from within our school system and then goes out into the community. And then there are our productive members of society. And so we need to fund that and and that's the culture that's going to come out. So. I said I wasn't going to talk long and then I talked really long, so I'm sorry. I will move on because I've, I mean, it's all, again, it's all just kind of reiterating the same point. Where we need to make sure that we have heavy decisions to make, but we need to make sure we're doing them. We're doing the right thing and we need to fight for some things because what's the point if we don't?
I'm just gonna piggyback on what Brad and Kate saying. I think, you know, there's some things that because this audit and and this. The circumstances around where we are in our budget, so to speak. That we may need to pause a little bit on making decisions about. The next item on the agenda because again, we have been sitting here discussing this with this woman. And it's very hard to to make it make sense in one's head of. We just had this equity audit done. We know that we're trying to fill these gaps. We know that these children need these services, but yeah. We're here, you know, and. Maybe this isn't the place to say it, but then again, maybe it is the place to say it, right? Maybe we go back to the town again. Maybe we go back to the town again. Because as Kate said, what's a shiny new building if we don't have any students to put in it to teach? Right, like. My children don't got no alternative. There's students that look like you. That don't have no alternative. And I keep going back to, keep going back to the dismantling of a public school system. And I know that that's not the intent and the intent of the town of South Kinstown. But if we can't. Educate our kids or for an allocation that needs to come to us from the town of South Kinstown. Then that's exactly what's going to happen to our. Public education system. And in my opinion, it's starting to happen because when we start taking away. Adults that need to provide certain services for certain children. Those children are not going to be here. Their parents are going to take them somewhere else to find them those services.
It's kind of a tough act to follow. Think I'm, it's done going first from now on. So first, I'd like to thank all our administrative staff that has put so much time and effort and. Serious thoughtful consideration into this report, which. I need to review again and again and again. But I agree with what Mr. Shear said. I think this should be a standing item. Agenda item going forward so that we can. We can bring it back and and discuss steps that are being taken. You know, some meetings, there may be big things and and some there are. You know, little, little things, but every little step forward brings us a step forward. And like Ms. Massenanti said, we have to change the culture of our schools. Our educators and our community about the all students can learn. At high levels. And. I'm one of those senior citizens with no kids in the school that that is fighting for. The the additional funding. I've made that very clear. You know, I used to use the example with the town council. Maybe I need to break it out again. When when my household population went down by two thirds in my mortgage, my electric bill, my gas bill. Did not go down by two thirds, although one of those two people used to take very long showers. But. Somebody supported the schools when I was in the South Kinstown schools. They built three schools when I was in the South Kinstown schools. And and so we need to continue and Mr. Shear, will you please repeat? Your story from the last joint meeting at every joint meeting going forward about the numbers. Of, you know, it costs so much to run a classroom and if two kids leave, that's not going to go down. That's going to stay the same, which increases our, our, our per pupil expenditure. Please repeat that. So.
I am going to ask that we bring this back to the equity.
Yeah, but thank you very much for all the work that you folks have put into this presentation.
Of course, I also extend my thanks to all participants, both from the community, from administration, from Westwind, providing such a comprehensive. Assessment of where we are with our with our equity audit. And I I largely agree with comments from my colleagues about. We have. A guideline, a gap analysis, whatever you want to call it, a guideline to to look at how we can close our achievement gaps. But on the other hand, we do have constraints, you know, from a budget perspective. I'll go too far into that, but I do want to. Make sure we keep top of mind in all our decisions, including budget decisions, including, you know, curriculum decisions, whatever decisions we're making. This equity audit gives us a good. Frame of reference for how we approach solving some of these problems. I think that has to be kept top of mind. I think to the point of the other members up here. We definitely, I don't know if we need to have it as a standing item, but I definitely want to keep this top of mind as we go through. You know, budget making next year, as we go through our discussions throughout the rest of this year. I I think it highlights a lot of things. We probably already knew kind of down deep that this, these problems exist. This really highlights them and I think gives us an opportunity to really address them in a real way. And I think it's important for us to be not reactive. I think we need to be thoughtful. We need to really consider what we can do here. And we really need to be innovative and how we can address these things. And given the budgetary constraints, we may have to be even more innovative. But uh, but ultimately, I I I definitely agree, we should be, you know, the the two sides of the coin don't really jive together. As far as what we get here in the equity audit and what we have from us for the next agenda item, but. With that, you know, again, I I think this is a great opportunity. I'm I'm really glad we we fought through it. We got it going. There there are times we probably could have said, let's, you know, not worry about it, let's set it to the side, but we. Bought for it through multiple budget cycles to get this in our budget to do this audit. We've done it. We can't go back in the past. We can't, you know, to Mr. Bjaros's point, we don't have a time machine. So all we can do is move forward from where we are now. And I think this gives us a good frame of reference to do that.
I just want to go back to. One thing that Apollo was talking about is how long it took us to get here, but we got here. And we knew we had these disparities in our district. With various minority subgroups. And we listened to people came that came and advocated for this. And so I think this is very important work. And I was very. Very happy with the report that Wes when did. I think it's extremely thorough and well done. And I'm, I think there's so many opportunities now to. Find solutions to the challenges we have. And so. That every student has the same access to educational opportunities. I think that's really my takeaway from this is how to find out and make sure all kids. Have those same opportunities. And I and I think this is a really good. Roadmap on how to get there. So I'm I'm really glad that we took this step. I think it's important work. And we're going to be, have to be diligent going forward to keep this in the front of our minds and the work we do here. So I want to echo what everybody has said about that. So but thank you, everybody, for all your hard work. All right, that will bring us to. School Committee Business B, Discussion, Action. Layoffs, nonrenewals, fiscal. Exigency, fiscal year twenty twenty six.
So the list of of positions before you, let me, in in terms of clarification, based on where we are in terms of the budget. We have gotten no new updates from the, from the governor's budget. There have been no significant changes since. Past town council meetings, we've gotten no new guidance regarding federal. So these positions were the positions that were assumed in the adopted, in the, in the. When we selected which of the options of budget that you put a gavel down. These were the, these were the positions that were a part of that. These are not new or in addition to or on top of. These were the positions that were originally spoken to. And while I'll try to always be an eternal optimist. I don't see where, I I'm not getting any indicators of a change in federal funding for the better. Or state funding for the better. And as such, I I I bring these as a recommendation before you. So that these. The people who hold these positions can have an opportunity to know where they stand. As well as then we can plan for the implications of these positions being reduced or eliminated. It is a small consolation. However, the other piece of that is if things were to change for the positive, we can always then recall people. Recall positions. So if we were to come up with grants, if things were to change, if next week we make the, you know, the the cases are made. During those budget meetings or somebody puts forward and again, you know, different pieces. So whatever happens, we can all always recall people to positions. But again, these are, again, I just wanted to highlight that these are not new. These were part and parcel of the proposed budget that was adopted.
I'll make a motion reluctantly to accept the superintendent's recommendations. For layoffs and nonrenewals due to fiscal exigency. For the fiscal year twenty two thousand twenty six.
I'll make a a second, but we're going to open for discussion, yes.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any discussion?
I have a question first is, are, how many or if any of these positions. Are related to declining enrollment? Are there just fewer? I mean, like at our high school, I think we have smallest. High school class we've ever had and I I don't, I I was just going to look to see if it's getting even smaller next year or not. But are there, are there some of these positions?
But are there are there some of these positions that are related to declining enrollment or if we had enough funds, we would. We would keep them all.
Both. Most of them, I mean, it in terms of being, there there are some that are that are. That are cuts because of enrollment that we knew already and that those were one year only positions. That we can now remove because that cohort is not moving forward and does not need that generally in the elementary levels. Then there are some that we could say are are related to enrollment because there's enough. Faculty and staff to offer a full schedule for for students. So obviously not having um. You know, so it it ultimately it can be accommodated. And so is it enrollment based? Well. Yes, but at the same time, you know, there are choices that needed to be made because it's a matter of, you know. The number of opportunities for teaching and learning in those areas that are that are also influencing those decisions. So it's course requests, it's um prerequisites. And again, in terms of, we do know that. Based on the recommend recommendations here, uh, it is our uh, principal's belief that every student can will be. Able to have a full schedule and will be appropriately placed. We will also be meeting every aspect of the BEP and our contractual obligations. Um, given these. In in terms of. You know, other cuts, there are cuts in that in order to get to a certain number or to try it um. Given the the original directive of, you know. Or history of being level funded, that there are things that will they hurt? Um, or. Again, it's being done. For fiscal exigency um, to make that number in that. The services that are offered um, can be absorbed.
Couple other questions. I know. I guess I mentioned a couple of positions seem it to lose a couple of these positions seem um. Contrary to the goals of the equity audit um. But maybe related to having fewer students who need those services, but one, so. The the like, for example, the M L L teacher, which is spelled, which is called out in the equity audit. As an issue of, you know, the multi language learner students. Are one of those cohorts that chronically is behind our other students. And I'm wondering if there's a. It's standard for ratio of teacher, student and M L L. Students and if we're meeting that standard and after you lose that that teacher or if if there's an I D L or. Do we just have so few of those students? So we don't need that.
E L L and M L L teachers i- in terms of their certification, as well as, you know, fall under the district umbrella. And so. Every year, our E L L, M L L uh, teachers are placed based on student need. And that is also influenced by enrollment in 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 general um. But so there there might be uh, one year. A a teacher uh, that is. At one school where another year, okay, they're split between two schools. Um, you know, so it it depends on on where they are, but we we would be in ratios. Um, additionally, we need to, we all, it's not as clear cut as um. You know, a standard class size because is it, you know, are are they are the students um. You know, removed from formal education and just getting back in. Are they bridging? Are they? So there's different. In terms of criteria of where they are in terms of their English language acquisition, which then determines the amount of services. But they are also, but also um, in terms of uh. They're not immune to declining enrollments as well as fiscal exigency.
Just as we heard from a couple of people here tonight, concerns about the guidance. Um, reduction. Is that, is there one guidance counselor for all the elementary school? It's because it says this guidance counselors. Covering all elementary schools, but is that the only one for all elementary schools or? And and similarly, I'm wondering, but I know there's a ratio for school psychologists per student. I'm not sure about guidance counselor per student. If there's a recommended. Ratio suppose of.
So there are ASCA standards um, that do uh, recommend counselor to student. Ratios, uh, generally, they tend to do that at uh, at the secondary level. Um, and currently. Position wise. In the in the district, we do have one guy, uh, one counselor assigned to all of the elementary schools. What they do at each school. And what grade they work with varies, or my understanding is it's varied over time and that has changed. Um, and then this year in terms of each school. So there's one for all three. There are uh, two uh. And then there's uh, at Broad Rock and then at uh, here at the high school.
So with this cut, would there be no guidance counselors at the elementary school?
That would be correct.
So that.
So I won't get into detail about the individual positions themselves because um, what might be important for one cohort of kids might not be important for another cohort of kids and. Everybody's important. For all of our kids, so um, my concern would would come in is, um, and I totally understand we have to do this. Like I get it as far as procedural and general law and and all of that. So I understand that. What I would love to um, for us to do, however, is in looking at the impacts on our on our students. And putting it up against our equity audit is what we clearly um, need to do this in order to, like I said, um, you know. Conform to our our. General laws and make sure that we're we're giving people their notices and making sure everybody has all the information that that they need to make their own personal decisions. Um, but I would love for us also between now and our budget hearings, um, maybe have a conversation with the town and say, look, this is our. This is what we got back with our equity audit. This is what we were told. And quite frankly, we're just falling right into doing what we always do. And and not stepping outside of the box for going back to them and saying. We need this. If you want us to see improvements with these cohort of students. This is a need that we have and it is going to cost us X number of dollars. And Ken, you've told us to come back to you and here we are. We've come back and we're asking. And we have till what June thirtieth before their budget is finalized or or or. Something like that, whatever it is, doesn't matter. Go to them and say, we're coming back to you and saying, in order for us to move the needle. And support. All of our kids. With what they need, we need blah. And they can say no, and that would be terrible. Um, but it's worth a. It's worth the hail Mary. Um, so that's kind of, that's my perspective on it. Clearly, we need to, we need to approve this for for many reasons. Even though there are. Many positions on here that I would hope we can, we can recall. We've been able to do it in the past. Hopefully, it will happen again. But if it can't, we need to go back. And 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 make sure we go to the town and say, you told us to come back, so we're coming back.
What Kate said.
Yeah, I um. I agree, and I think this is something I've been I've been saying uh, for for a couple of years now behind the scenes, and we really just need to be. We need to be asked for more money because our our costs are going up and here we are now, four years on, five years on level funded. This is what gets us is. Reduction in force of this this size. That is impactful for our student population and does. It it does go contrary to what we're finding in the in the equity audit, and this is a direct consequence of those decisions in in the past. Uh, but we can't relitigate the past. All we can do is move forward and I would. Certainly, uh, agree with Kate that we need to uh, push for what is right and what is needed for our students. Uh, we. Uh, we have a level of fiscal responsibility. I think we've shown that we've been fiscally fiscally responsible with closing schools and getting them off our books and trying to reduce our costs as much as possible, but. Uh, has been has been set up here and in the past, our costs don't go down because we lose uh, a one or two students have a. Uh, a grade. Um, our costs continue to rise. Um, I don't know if anyone was paying attention, but I think we've had some inflation over the last few years. Uh, so. These costs go up and it's just the way of the world and. You know, yes, we were, it looks like we are really paying attention to where we can reduce based on enrollment. I think that's appropriate, right? We want to, we don't wanna have extra. People if they're not necessary, right? I mean, we, they are real people. I do feel for them, but at the same time, we do have to be fiscally responsible. I think we've been fiscally responsible. I think it's. Far past time for us to be really adamant about really getting the money we need to run the school in a way that is going to. Really show improvement for students if they, um, on the one hand, if you wanna say we're not. Showing achievements, we're not showing the right test scores, but on the other hand, you wanna say, you wanna take money away from us? That is not sens- that's nonsensical to me. It just doesn't. Work. You can't have both, cannot have it both ways. So. That's. And. Alright, that's I'm gonna, that's all I'm gonna say about that.
I would just say that uh, again, in in the reminder of the of how we got here. Um, you know, we we are one hundred percent at that tipping point. In terms of, you know, so to get to level funding. You know, we. We we couldn't get there. I could not put before you. Um, now could. I could not put before you staff cuts. To get to that number that did not eliminate programs completely across all schools or um, and take those and take those opportunities away and hence why. Um, well, we'll have additional conversations about that. What do we do with that? That gap or how do we make up for that, whether that be fun about? So those discussions are 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 still there. So um, again. And that and that has not changed. So um, again, the only ultimately program per se, which is not. Across the district uh, would be that guidance piece and that. Uh, again, talking based on the resources and people and counselors and things available. Um. Again, all of this is the is the best is the best worst ideas that we have based on the fiscal exigency that we face. But again. We're not getting there now. It was level funding, just we we can't get there.
So. I tried to speak to this at the town council meeting. This gets harder every year. Because the. I mean, you cut one year, that means you're you're cutting deeper than next. And. You know. They hurt. These are people. They're not just. Numbers on a spreadsheet. They're people that are losing their livelihoods. And. This is probably the most, for me, the most painful thing we. Are up here and have to do that we don't wanna do. And all I got from the town council was, thank you for speaking from your heart. I don't think I moved that needle at all. And. I wish I did. I wish I wish they would give us more, but I'm with you. All I can say is no, we can, we can go back. We can keep. Saying it. Keep speaking from our heart. Unfortunately, I think. Because of the calendar and procedures and people have a right to notice. We have to do these things um, as painful as they are. Now, um, so we have a motion and a second.
Just just one more, um. Because I agree that we should go back to the council. And ask for more, but. I don't. I don't think we can ask them for nineteen. Hurt the money to pay for nineteen positions. So we need to narrow. What we're asking for. I can't, I I I wouldn't wanna put. Our superintendent in the position of making that. Decision himself or or going into council and saying, I want you to fund nineteen positions because the. School committee just told me not to cut anybody. So I think we need to narrow what we're. What is it that we're asking for? Because I think we are. I mean, not not just because of level of funding, are we? Are are we in this position? It's going to get worse next year because. Um, they've found a way to not increase maintenance of effort, so that percentage is always, it's just gonna keep getting worse. Right? And we're gonna have the bond next year, so it's gonna get more difficult. To. Get any funding and we're gonna probably see more positions and positions that actually. Involve. The elimination of programs next year. We don't. See some um, increase now, but I but I don't think we can just. Give the direction to go ask. Go ask for money. We have to be more specific.
I don't think we can, it's it's not our role to tell the superintendent who to who to. What to do in that scenario. That would be, that would actually be his job. Not our job. But what we can say is in this particular, for this particular agenda item. For various reasons, it's, you know, we have to take action as it is. But we can give him the directive to. Well, not even, we don't giving him any directive. We're taking it on ourselves as a school committee when that we need to. We need to go back to the. You know, the 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 town and say there are, there are and and Dr. Uh, Mr. Pajaza may come up and say there are two key positions that relate directly to our equity audit that we should be making sure we have the funds to support. And and then that. It can be an ask to the town council, but I don't think that that is an ask here in this. For this particular agenda item, and I also wouldn't want. To put on the spot like going through each one and determining here wh- which one is more important than the other because while there are some. That are referenced in the equity audit. The impacts of. The impacts of losing one position. And I don't even wanna reference any on the list, but. You know, to the impacts of losing even one position that. That may not be in the equity audit and maybe a point five role. That impact may go like hard to a cohort of kids who rely on whatever that's, you know, so I I just. We can't really give that direction either way, especially for this particular item.
So we have. Two retirements coming up for the end of this school year and in the past, we would do that one then. To use for other positions. Are we unable to do that? Because that would be allotted somewhere else. To keep.
So one one more time is that, so we have retirements. So as of right now, in term, we have very limited retirements right now. Um. And I. I don't know of any retirements right now that either are not being filled internally. Or that we would not be looking, that we don't have a need for to rehire at those positions. So if we were, you know, so I in the personnel, today's personnel report talked about two present, two folks who who are retiring. It is my understanding and my belief that we would be refilling those positions. However, anytime that there are is a surprise retirement and in terms of is, you know, do we need to, do we need that position? Can we realic? Do we need as much of it? Do we need it somewhere else is is? Is a is a discussion that that can be had as part of any. But as in part of any cycle. So as as things, you know, it for lack, I hate to put it as opportunity, but if. More retirements were to come in unexpectedly. You know, one that we we would have people who are laid off here. If there are retirements happening there, they are getting recalled first. So um. Assuming we kept that position. If for some reason, yeah, assuming we kept that position, if we then reallocated that position to something identified in the equity audit or to an emerging need. Um. Or that we reuse that position to reinstate something because of the implications that. Um, you know, at at this stage are um, real in terms of fiscal, but imagined in terms of impact. We could reinstate those and say, oh, okay, so. I believe, as you were just saying, it might not be mentioned in the equity audit. However. This school is, school X is at capacity, so lunch supervision is, so we need to target it there, you know, and so that. That, yeah, safe, engaged, future focused, you know, that the day to day operations of. Our our obligations to to that safety and education. Would would take precedent. Yes, thank you.
So. I I think it's going to be all up to us. To figure out how we wanna advocate in front of the town council. And and what we want to bring to them and it's, I think, an individual choice. Um, with that, I I think we need to. Move on on the mem uh, motion we have before us. So. All those in favor?
I.
That motion passes. Okay. They'll bring us to. They'll bring us to the next lovely one. Number C, discussion, action, non renewal of one year only positions.
So this one um we you had already taken action on prior um in a meeting in February in terms of it's a it's a unique piece in in there in terms of noticing people who have signed contracts for one year only that we take action saying, yes, it's one year. It's one year only. And then we that contract ultimately is not renewed as another one year only. What's unique um in in our operations and our collective bargaining agreements is is that when somebody serves, I believe, it up to ninety days in a long term, they then become one year onlys in that capacity. So when you took action in February to provide notice to people who were originally hired or started the school year or were brought in to replace a leave or were filling an unexpected exit from the district, these people had not attained one year only status yet. Since then, they've accumulated the ninety days or more that has put them into one year only status. Hence requiring the need to give them notice that that their contracts will not be renewed. Um, and that that one year status will conclude at the end of this school year. So this is not anything different than what you had done prior to in uh in February and as it relates to one year only positions. One other piece that I because I promised the people um both beforehand, and in both cases, there is absolutely nothing to do with performance on any of these on any of these positions or people who are impacted by these positions.
So I'll make a motion um to approve the non renewal of one year only positions.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
That motion passes. All right, next up is D, discussion, action, fiscal year twenty twenty five budget amendments. Mr. Kilpatrick.
Madam Chair, members of the committee. So what you have in front of you is a proposed budget amendment that was presented to the Budget Subcommittee last week. So essentially, this is with regards, sorry, with regards to the West Kingston Elementary School Parking Lot Project. So essentially, what I'm asking for is to shift some uncommitted funds in our added district tuitions, which are ninety nine point nine percent guaranteed not to be spent through the rest of the fiscal year uh to the CIP program, specifically, again, the West Kingston Parking Lot Project. So about two or three weeks ago, I met with the town engineer over at West Kingston just to get a look at the parking lot to develop a scope of work. And in his professional opinion, uh, the budgeted amount of four hundred thousand dollars would not get us the entire parking lot, only get us the back and um the driveway at the side of the school. And so essentially, I'm just looking to increase that um budgeted amount so that we can do the whole thing. Um, and also do the basketball hoops and um would be happy to know that we are getting quotes for adjustable basketball hoops. Uh, all four of them. So that's uh good news for the kids there. Um, the town currently has I hopefully he's going to watch this. This was for you, Mr. Beasley. Uh, the town currently has a contract with Lynch um and we're hoping that potentially they could amend their contract to include this scope of work. I'm still waiting to hear back from the town on that. That's a potential contract vehicle for us. So again, just in summary, I'm asking to move the budget from those added district tuition lines to the fund transfer outline. So that keeps the general fund budget bottom line the same. You might be asking, why am I not putting it in the capital fund, trying to keep the bottom line the same? And then essentially, I'll just execute a journal entry to actually move the funds from the general fund into the capital fund after we move the budget. So move the budget and then we'll move the funds, so to speak. Um, that's just the technical jargon. Uh, and then lastly, the project is reimbursable, meaning the town will receive the housing aid reimbursements for this as it was in the stage one approval. Um, if it is substantially complete by June thirty, they'll get it next fiscal year. If it's not, they'll get it the following. So happy to entertain any questions or clarifications for this.
So so are we almost doubling the amount that's being paid to that because we're going from four hundred?
I had to I had to confirm that because when I submit the housing aid form last year, it was based on that four hundred thousand dollar budgeted amount. So so the state would budget for that for their housing aid reimbursement. I'm not sure if we change the budget, if they'll give us the additional reimbursement, but I had to confirm that. That's a great question.
So here's the rate reimbursement be the thirty five percent?
My understanding is the thirty five.
Okay.
But I could be wrong. I think it's the thirty five. Yeah. I don't think this will qualify for the bonus.
I'll make a motion to approve the budget amendments as recommended by Mr. Kilpatrick.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
That motion passes and you're up next.
Awesome. Thank you very much. So next we have a proposed CIP revision for fiscal year twenty twenty six. So based on some conversations that I had with our former uh facilities director, Mr. Mahoney, the great Mr. Mahoney. We thought it would be in the district's best interest to shift some of our priorities. Uh, so specifically, I'm asking to push the Peacedale Fire Alarm Project at about eighty one thousand dollars and the lavatory fixtures projects at uh Matunik and West Kingston at about a hundred eighty thousand dollars to a future year. So ask me to push those two projects to a future year and replace them with uh HVAC replacements at West Kingston and Broad Rock. Uh, for a total budgeted cost of two hundred sixty one thousand four hundred and three dollars. So just asking to take the eighty one thousand for Peacedale and a hundred eighty thousand for um Matunik and West Kingston and shift it to the HVAC replacement. Just for a point of reference, to date, we've spent over a hundred and seventy five thousand dollars on HVAC repairs between the two buildings. So they're just ripe for replacement. Um, they're original to the buildings. Hopefully I have that correct. Mr. Mahoney, if you're watching. Um, and then lastly, just want to, you know, put your mind at ease. So by pushing the Peacedale Fire Alarm or the Fire Panel Project to a future year does not in any way jeopardize those systems. Uh, based on my conversations with Mr. Mahoney, those are newer systems already. This would be an upgrade to those systems and they would do what he called future proof them to code. So anticipating um code changes. If we did the um upgrades now, they would be compliant once those changes came online essentially. Uh, so it's not necessary to accomplish them next fiscal year. And then the lavatory fixtures project is not urgent either. Uh, it's something we can handle in-house incrementally as we go. Um, maybe just smaller pieces at a time. And that budgeted number was a best case scenario from Studio Jade at the time, that one hundred eighty thousand dollars. So uh again, just asking to shift um two hundred sixty one thousand four hundred and three dollars to the HVAC replacement project at Broad Rock and West Kingston.
Would uh the for the projects were delaying, were those reimbursable under the um submission?
Yes.
And this new project probably wouldn't would not be, I said.
No, all of the projects that we uh select for our CIP are on the stage one approval. They're all in that universe.
Okay, so this replacing the HVAC units would be reimbursable at the?
Correct. And so when I fill out the housing aid forms for next year, this project will be in that total that the state budgets for.
I'm I'm guessing from the price that we're talking about maybe one unit on each building, not that's not money to replace all the rooftop units on two buildings.
It based on what Mr. Mahoney said, it should get us.
Okay.
Should. We'll see.
I I just want to clarify the hundred twenty three thousand to date is the current fiscal year?
Is actually a hundred seventy five thousand. Yes, current fiscal year.
Okay.
Just on repairs at those two buildings for the HVAC units. So.
Okay.
It's long overdue.
Any other questions?
Motion to approve the recommendation for the transfer uh for the FY twenty twenty six capital improvement plan revision as presented by Mr. Kilpatrick.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
And that motion passes.
Excellent. Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Thank you, Mr. Kilpatrick. All right, that will bring us to F. Uh, policy, new therapy dogs in district schools, third grade.
So as you may recall, this came before us a couple of times previously. We did a first read. Uh, the intention was for the second read to have a waiver piece in it, but there was some uh last minute confusion ahead of the meeting. Uh, so we didn't get that piece in there in the second read. So we brought back for a third read to include the uh discussion of having a waiver in place by the owner handler who's bringing the dog into the schools. It is under the number one request. Uh, the last line there says upon approval, the owner handler will complete a waiver with the South Kingston School Department. Uh, I think intentionally, we don't have a direct link to a waiver, so we can have some flexibility in what that waiver looks like, maybe based on changing um legal requirements. Uh, but there is a is a requirement for a waiver in there, which was our recommendation from the legal team. Uh, so that's really the only substantial change from the first or second read. Uh, and uh otherwise, it's as it was uh previously, I think we do incorporate some of the um you know, just kind of making it a little more generic as far as what dog with what certification agency we use. There was one called out specifically in the first read, and then we we changed that around for the second read and this uh retains that revision as well. Um, so happy to entertain any questions or comments about the the policy.
I'll make a motion to approve policy, the new policy, therapy dogs in district schools.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes. And that will bring us to G, uh, discussion legislative liaison update. Michelle.
Thank you for adding this to the agenda. I've been trying to get information on a bill that I heard was in the Senate and I haven't been able to get the information I'm looking for. So I can't speak to it until I I until I get that information. So I nothing to say.
Okay, so just um when you're ready to to come back, just let us know and put you back on.
Can I actually jump in on this one?
If it's legislative.
It's legislative update.
Okay.
Um, and and it is um so that I had a um I've struggled with this month's calendar because we have a meeting on the on on this this week. Usually, the town council has a meeting the day before us, but they don't. They their meeting is not until next week. And they are next Monday, they will be discussing the um resolution around uh requesting ride include transportation into the funding formula. Um, they had discussed it at their last meeting. Uh, they brought it to their um their legal team who was going to go through it and and just kind of make sure all eyes are dotted, t's are crossed. They'll be discussing it again um Monday, next Monday. And then we will be able to then kind of bring it to our table at our next meeting. Um, also, there was um I was not able to be part of the meeting um where Representative McIntyre joined uh Dr. McGare um and Ride and uh Mr. Pajaza um discussing about um basically ramifications of CTE of the CTE requirements in this in the districts um and how the impacts. So that com- those conversations are kind of still ongoing and I'm hopeful to reconnect with um uh reference Representative McIntyre with Michelle and and Stu joining me in in a in a previous meeting to see if there's any sort of resolution that we can put together to to make make sure she has what she needs in order to continue pursuing um kind of that that those discussions and seeing if we can get any movement out of those as well. So.
Okay, well, we'll make sure we get them on our agenda so that we can follow up on that here as well. So great. Thank you. And that's going to move us right back to you, Kate, with the school building committee update.
Thank you. Um, so school building committee update. Um, we had an interesting meeting on Thursday where um Slam came forward with a a new design. Not a new design because the the actual design of the physical building hasn't changed. It was more a presentation of what the um out outside in colors might look like. We'll just say that uh there was a visceral reaction from the folks at the table and they did not like the colors. And so they're going back to the drawing board on that um and uh they will be representing. Um, I've actually requested that they may want to um bring a just to show that they're still working on it, bring it to the town council meeting on Monday, just because they're going to hear from the town manager. I believe if I could quote him, it was wicked ugly. And so um those would ring in their ears. So I was like, maybe if we brought another like still in draft, you know, we're moving the needle and making sure that we're taking into account um folks really like the traditional school red brick look like like we have at Peacedale and like we have at Broad Rock. Um, and and so they they listened, they listened. It was a pretty harsh meeting. And uh but they listened and um they're making they're making changes again. But again, it's not changing the footprint. It's not changing the programs. It's it's literally just the facade of the building as far as color schemes and and yeah, silly, silly stuff.
Can I ask you though, were they led to that direction because of the materials and material cost? Or was it just a miss?
It was strictly, it was a miss on colors. Like, I don't know what happened like because the previous presentation, it was fully like everybody's like, this is great. And then they came forward this and it was like.
Yeah, the only way, the only thing I could think of was that, oh, they are looking to find less expensive alternative.
No, the materials, yeah, just the color. Um, there was also another bit of a discussion um which I I truly apologize to the building committee because I really dropped the ball. Um, Mr. Beasley took me by surprise and he brought up mass timber again versus steel around tariffs. And we had already addressed that at a previous school building committee meeting. Um, and and um it would have, which was also discussed at town council level where it the cost to the project would be astronomical and the and the timeline and schedule would have been blown out of the water. So um, it it's not a direction that we're that we're going in, but I wanted to make sure that then make that very clear.
Um, within the last couple of days, they put tariffs on lumber too.
Yeah, well, and and that was another piece and and all the lumber comes from Canada. There's very little sourced um US lumber. We don't actually have the trees to do that. So um, we have another meeting with um Rhode Island Department of Education uh School Building Authority, um, I believe tomorrow morning. And um uh Mr. Pajaza will be there, Dr. McGare will be there, our entire project team will be there. I will be zooming in um for most of it. Um, and again, it's just to make sure that we're dotting i's, crossing t's, where um we're kind of keeping because um Ride is, you know, funding you know, up up to fifty percent of a portion of the the bond. Um, they're part of the owners. And so they want to make sure that we're doing everything we need to be doing. Um, we also made a step forward. I want I just want to make sure that I say the right company name. Um, we approved the contract for our environmental engineering team. And that went to they are called the BL Company. Um, and there was there was a whole review process. Um, there was a, you know, decision matrix. And it came down to it came down to price. So we went to we went with the um the the lowest bid, um, but everybody had like their references checked and they were all hitting all the same points. Um, and we went forward with that. And I think that's about it. We do have tomorrow night here um in this room. We do have our abutters meeting that is going to go over the site design, not the building, but the site. Um, and basically open it up to our abutters um and how the construction process and the layouts and um and um kind of, you know, water runoff um accomplishments and just kind of to make sure that they are up to speed because work will start to be done. Some environmental engineering drilling will take place. And it's part of our planning board requirement um in order to approve landscaping and proper drainage and things of that nature. Um, at this um meeting tomorrow night, they will be displaying a a kind of a rendering of what this whole, I'll call it a campus for back, lack of a better word, will look like during construction. So it's kind of a uh almost like a a crayon type rendering that will show what hazard feel will look like when it's a construction zone. And then what the borders will look like and what it's kind of like a a really interesting perspective of what the environment will look like. So the abutters have clear expectation of what they're they'll be navigating. Um, so they will and and it's strictly for a bud, excuse me, let me rephrase that. It's specifically for a butters, but it is open to the public. Anybody can come. We will not be live streaming, but we will be recording it and uploading it to YouTube within twenty four hours after the meeting. We will not be live streaming, but we will be recording it and uploading it to YouTube within twenty-four hours after the meeting. And then our next school building committee business meeting will not take place until May first. No strategic decisions or, or, you know, time sensitive votes are, are needed in between those periods of time. The reason it's pushed off is because we have our budget hearings with the town and it conflicts with, with those dates. So we are moving the next meeting to May first, which would be our, our, kind of keep with our cadence. But if something does come up that we need to take action on, we'll, we'll pop a meeting on the books just to be safe.
So I'm just kind of wondering about your, I've got two questions actually. Your, your timeline of when you think you might actually break ground? And the second one is, are you having a groundbreaking ceremony?
Great questions. We are, we are shooting for, we're still on, on target to break ground in the summer of, of this year. If it's at the beginning of June or the end of June, you know, we, we still are, are kind of navigating all that. I, we will absolutely be having a groundbreaking ceremony in that, oh my gosh, I might cry when that actually happens. Get to our hard hat. No, I'm kidding. I don't know if we have to wear hard hats, but, but no, that, and we have very clear directive we've given to the project team, number one, to, to be prepared over these next few weeks to present to, to us and the town council, if not both at the same time, which would be ideal. But to come prepared with, with that, that exact, like, we, we need to be getting to a point where we're pinpointing a date rather than just that roundabout. Because also summer of twenty twenty-five is also kind of creeping up on us pretty quickly. So we are pushing, we are pushing for them to come, come with us for that.
Excellent. I, I did have, I did have one question about the, the timeline. I know in a previous meeting, I, it may have been pushed back. I think there's some, I forget the terminology, but to get us back to the September opening day, is, are we still on track for the September?
So we are, we're doing a lot of, I'll say there's a lot of pressure being put on, on folks to get that done. One of the, one of the determining factors is where we are moving forward with a recommendation to the town council to agree to an early bid, early bid proposals so that we can start, number one, making early bids out there so we can see cost savings. But also it starts certain portions of the, of the project where we can then get reimbursements at an earlier date as well. And Left Field will map that out for us. But we are, one of the biggest pieces is making sure it's, it's actually local and state permitting processes that are the, are the two pieces that put us at risk time-wise. And we're putting a lot of pressure on those entities to make sure that, well, putting pressure on ourselves to make sure all our I's are dotted and T's are crossed, so that when we go to them, that they understand, like, we have a tight deadline. And if we can make sure that those that could take up to ninety days, don't take up to ninety days, that they take, you know, up to thirty days and that they're, they're done in a, in a reasonable manner that can reclaim those, those weeks. So that's the goal.
Thank you.
I just wanted to comment, well, thank you to the building committee because I know it's a tremendous amount of work. Um, but I am assuming that whatever legal guidelines you have for notifying the abutters has been done. But I have to say, on, on the other side of that, I've seen a lot of, I've seen information about that meeting in multiple places and it doesn't impact me. But I, I think that you guys, you folks have done a good job with that. Thank you.
Appreciate that feedback. Yeah, that's all I got.
Thank you so much. All right. So do we have a motion to adjourn?
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
All those in favor?